I should, she was, she's two years younger than Mary, but she's three years behind in school because of the way the birthdays. I mean, Amy was six months old.
All right, Earl, we're about four minutes over. We'll call the meeting up. I've got, I've got 404. Sorry. You were talking. I did not. That's reading. I sat here for four minutes after four. I've been respecting my elders. I'm gonna call this meeting in order to the Plaka Planning Board at 404 on March, Tuesday, March 1st. We will start with an invocation. If you please rise. I guess Pastor Mulberry is not with us, so I'll do it. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. We ask that you bless us and watch over us, Father. Lead us in the way that we should, give us wisdom, God, in everything that we need to do, Father. Ask that you bless each and every one that are here. In Jesus' name, I pray. If you will join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Sonny, would you please do roll call?
Thank you, sir. Chairman Killibrue.
Here.
Vice Chairman Deloche, not present. Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Owens, not present. We do have a forum, sir.
Thank you. Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the planning board with respect to any matter considered at such meeting will need a recorded, a record of the proceedings and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made. Which record includes the testimony, evidence upon which the appeal is to be based, Florida Statute 286-0105. Persons with disabilities requiring accommodations in order to participate in this meeting should contact the city clerk's office at 3290100 at least 24 hours in advance of the requests to request accommodations. I guess we move on to the swearing in of Mr. Earl Wallace.
If you would repeat after me. Iro Wallace.
Iro Wallace.
A planning board appointee.
Planning board appointee.
Of the Plaka City Commission. Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties. Of my appointed office. And will support and honor. To the best of my ability. All applicable laws. Of the state of Florida. Putnam County. The city of Plaka. As well as the beliefs. Vision, mission. Policies, procedures. Code of ethics. And code of conduct. Of the city of Plaka Planning Board. I hereby through this oath. Affirm that I will perform the duties. Of this public trust. In a fair. Equitable and ethical. Manner. Befitting the dignity. And responsibilities of the office. Thank you, sir.
All right, moving along. I need approval of the minutes from January 4th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question about the minutes, if you don't mind.
Sure, go right ahead.
When I reviewed them, there's a sentence in the second paragraph, Mr. Red Jones's comments. The applicant wishes to be able to keep the tree, but it'll not work in an aesthetically pleasing architecture plan. If I recall his, and I may be incorrect, his plan was with the location of the tree, he couldn't build the buildings. I don't think it was an aesthetically pleasing issue. It was a, these, these four buildings cannot be constructed with the tree there. Is that not accurate?
I'm not positive, Mr. Barr, because I mean, it was something within all that. They didn't want to keep trees or tree.
The tree was where the building was going to be built.
Right.
So I don't know if it's worth noting that it prevents the building of the building, not, not so much an aesthetically pleasing issue. It prevented, I think the term he used was the highest and best use of the property because it eliminated the ability for them to build four additional buildings. because it eliminated the ability for them to build four additional buildings.
Which Crants, you wanted to answer that?
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. If memory serves me right, in the minutes, the minutes go on to read that if, if the board denies the request to allow to remove the tree, the site plan would have less units. There was both referenced within the meeting. It wasn't going to be aesthetically pleasing and it wasn't going to have as many units.
Very good.
Now, a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion, a proper motion, proper second. All those in favor say aye. All those who oppose, I just have it unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on. If there, anybody that wants to make public comments to anything that might come before the board? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our regular business. First case is PB case 22 dash zero four. Oh, zero one, I don't know why I said four, I'm sorry.
Plank Director, Sydney Palaka, I want to let you know that the tree issue has been resolved. The cottages at St. John's has redesigned their buildings to move them out of the way and retain the tree. So they, they made a, instead of just having one open area, they have two open areas where they have the tree that will remain, and they moved those buildings over to the other open area that existed initially.
I'm happy because when I found out I couldn't make it, I thought that was a dead tree.
Well, she had a lot of board members fighting for you. You had a lot of board members fighting for you and referencing you, so.
He did. Know that your influence extends well beyond you sitting in the chair, sir. Okay, I'd like to briefly describe your, the application in front of you for PB 2201 at 7220 PRC Way. And then I will turn it over to Ms. O'Neilia Lozari, who is the applicant, the applicant's representative. And she is attending the meeting via Zoom. She will be utilizing this PowerPoint presentation, but we put it up here right now for purposes of you being able to see on the map where the parcels, parcels are, I should say. So this application is to simply rezone four parcels, one full parcel where the existing facility is, and then portions of one other parcel, one full other parcel, and then portions of two other parcels from PID planned industrial development to M1 industrial, light industrial. The applicant has indicated that one of the things that they had an issue with was the design standards that apply to another lot, a parcel across the street from 7220. But the ordinance does not designate that they apply to the 7220 site. So they also have to have some security fencing placed around this site because of their business or proposed business. And the design standards, PID, they would have to go through a whole lot of other documentation and another round of planning board, city commission to adopt development standards for this parcel. So the easiest thing to do was to rezone it to M1. Ms. Lozari, are you ready?
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I wonder if it is better for me to to try to share my screen so that I can move my own slides. Okay, thank you very much. And Ms. Walsh or Mr. Chair, would you please confirm that you can see my screen now?
We can.
Thank you, sir, very much. Appreciate it. My name is O'Neilia Lozari. I am with EDA Consultants. One of my colleagues, Stephanie Sutton, is in your audience, and both of us are going to be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Missile of Lozari can, excuse me, just a minute. Can we turn her volume up just to hear? Is there any possible way we can do that?
Mr. Chair, can you hear me better now?
Not really. I think it's us. I mean, I can hear you, but it just I know Mr. Wallace has, uh-oh.
Can you hear me better now? I will try to speak a little more loudly.
Hang on just a minute, I think it's us.
Okay.
They're trying to turn the volume up. Say something, Mrs. Lozari.
Thank you, sir. Can you hear me better now?
Hang on. Try it again.
Can you hear me better now?
Let's try it one more time. I can hear, but I'm worried about Earl.
Let me try again.
Okay, well, if Mr. Wallace could hear us, we're good, Mrs. Lozari. Sorry.
That is fine, and if I go too low at any point, please interrupt me and I will try to begin to speak a little more loudly.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
I did want to thank Ms. Walsh and other city staff. They have been very helpful to us in this process in explaining what we needed to do and assisting. So before anything else, we do need to thank them. And as I stated a little earlier, one of my colleagues, Stephanie Sutton, is in your audience and both of us will be available to respond to questions at the end of the presentation.
There we go, that's a lot better. So I don't know what happened. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's fine. Ms. Walsh did point out where the subject property is. This is your Palaka Municipal Airport. This is St. John's Avenue. This is PRC Way. The building fronts or faces out to PRC Way. And then on this left side, this is West Larson Boulevard. And over to the east is an eggplant business that creates food that's based on eggplant. It is in the Putnam County Business Park, but this area was annexed into the city of Palaka. The proposed changes are to change from Planned Industrial District to Light Industrial M1. The area was annexed from Putnam County under two separate ordinances. And this is part of the problem that we have is that there's some confusion and inconsistency based on that. The PID allowed industrial office and some commercial service uses. And the M1 zoning is very similar to the uses allowed in the Planned Industrial District. The property is approximately 26.76 acres in size. There is one vacant building that was previously a call center. And there are portions of three other parcels that are currently vacant. The tax parcel numbers are listed in the presentation. The current zoning allows, as I said, industrial warehousing, commercial service uses and offices. The PID zoning that was adopted, was adopted in two separate ordinances when it was annexed into the city of Palaka, and they were annexed at separate points in time. The property with the building was annexed in 2016, and the other property areas were annexed in 2010. And the proposal is to change the zoning to unify and clarify the situation. This is a close-up of the subject property. This is the property with the building on it. And this whole parcel is being in it, or is being proposed for rezoning. This property is part of a different tax parcel number, and it's only a portion of this and then a portion of this tax parcel. This is the existing zoning map with M1 PID on these portions. And then just PID was specified in the 2016 zoning ordinance. With this proposal, the entire area would be unified as M1 with consistent regulations. Some of the permitted uses in M1, wholesaling, warehousing, light manufacturing, printing, retail and repair establishments, service establishments, catering to commerce and industry, including linen supply, et cetera. Medical clinics in connection only with industrial activities. Express offices, commercial parking lots, truck, railroad, or other transportation terminals, et cetera. The justification for the change is that there is inconsistency in the zoning regulations for the parcels. The three vacant parcel areas have a zoning that was designated in 2010 as M1 slash PID with overlay standards that were adopted, but no master plan. The 7220 PRC Way parcel was zoned PID only in 2016 without overlay standards or a master plan. The applicant needs additional vacant area from the current vacant building on 7220 PRC Way to develop and expand for a medical marijuana grow and processing facility. The additional area is to be purchased from Putnam County Port Authority, and it is contingent upon the rezoning to M1. The rezoning to M1 will facilitate filling this large vacant building in the business park and produce new tax revenue and jobs with the additional expansion of that building and the construction jobs that that will produce. And there will be new jobs with this facility. The use, this would be a use of an existing site that has public facilities, water, sewer, electric service, and thus will reduce urban sprawl by developing in an existing business park. And that is consistent with your future land use element, Objective A16. There are 17 criteria in your land development code for the rezoning and an additional two criteria for the planning board to consider. These were all discussed in the justification report, and we can go into more detail on how the development meets that. But your staff has reviewed that justification report and found that this rezoning is approvable. And as we said, this will facilitate expansion of development on the site by clarifying and unifying the zoning regulations. With that, we are requesting approval of case PB 22 dash oh one. And as I said, my colleague Stephanie Sutton or myself will be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Ms. Lozari. Do you, any of the board members have any questions of Mrs. Lozari?
I've got a question for Ms. Walsh, if you don't mind. How do you rezone a portion of a parcel? I didn't know that, I mean.
You have to survey it out and, and designate it with a specific.
Why would it not be split and create, become a new parcel?
It will.
Okay.
You have to get the legal description for that portion that they're pulling out and create a new parcel.
Very good. That was my confusion. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Lozari?
I've got a couple of questions. When they talked about security fencing around this, the majority of the back part of this property is on St. John's Avenue. I'm asking. When they acquire the property, they have to put up security fencing on a cannabis growing facility. What kind of fencing are you guys proposing? Because I'm only familiar with like chain link and barbed wire, and that's to be blunt, it's hideous driving down St. John's Avenue.
Yes, the security fencing does have to be chain link with barbed wire on top per the regulations that the applicant has proposed to the state of Florida. But there will be, it's our understanding that there's a vegetation along St. John's Avenue already. And that would not be removed. And during the site planning process, we will work with Ms. Walsh and the city of Palaka to provide the vegetative buffer that would hide that fencing. But that would be at the site planning stage, which we would get to after the zoning.
Yeah, hey, I'm Stephanie Sutton. I can supplement that a little bit as well. We had a neighbor that called us concerned about this, and so I spoke with property owner this weekend about it. The majority of that area that's labeled M1 slash PID along St. John's Avenue currently is undeveloped, it's vegetated, and it will remain that way. The, the fencing will be closer to the existing building and the parking lot. And that's where the majority of the building expansion is proposed as well, on the existing impervious area. There's a chance that we will have to add a small stormwater swale behind the building. But the intent is that the fencing and the security is up closer to the building, and we leave that vegetative buffer exactly as it is along St. John's Avenue.
So you retained the vegetating buffer between, not only St. John's Avenue, but between the apartment complex that is next to you, too? Right?
Yes.
Because pretty much, I mean, doesn't that property butt up right up to the apartment complex?
No, it's separated by St. John's Avenue.
No, he's, he's referring to the existing apartment complex right here.
Woodlands Point.
Yeah. There's a, a bit of a buffer between there.
I believe that the eggplant facility separates that.
Okay, so the eggplant facility owns that property back to the.
Yeah, they also own, forgive me if I'm out of turn, where that retention pond is between the red line and the R3.
That remain as it is as well. That's not a part of our.
Yeah, that's the eggplant farm, but I believe they're going to use that for driveway.
So our driveway will be off of West Larson Boulevard. We'll use the existing driveway. And so that'll be kind of the access gate for the site. And then they'll probably, right now, there's existing driveway connections to PRC Way as well. Those will probably be less used once this site gets built out.
So will the security fence be around the whole parking lot area? Or is it just going to be around the building?
It will be around the majority of the parking lot building. There's, I wish I had a copy of the proposed site plan. We'll be submitting the site plan likely in April with the proposed building expansion. But the idea is that we're going to add on to the existing building and then place another building on the parking lot area in front of the existing building, if you're familiar with the site. Some parking would remain outside of the buildings, kind of around it for employees to park. But the majority of the development will be on the existing developed site. It will stretch over slightly closer to the eggplant property across this property line, which is part of why our client's buying that property from the county. So that the buildings can be a little bit longer. But the, the fencing will not be, and, and development is not proposed for the area along St. John's Avenue at all.
Okay, it just worries me that, I mean, and I say worry, that's a strong word for what I'm saying. That it would be closer to the apartment complex than, you know, but you mentioned, you're saying, you leave that worry with me. So yes, or Mr. Wallace?
Mr. Wallace? Mr. Wallace? This is Valeria Thomas.
Yes, Ms. Thomas.
I can't hear Mr. Wallace.
He's turning his microphone on now.
Thank you.
It can't be any closer. The, the eggplant people have all of that tan that's between this parcel we're addressing and the R3, which is the apartment complex. So it can't get any closer than that. But your fence you're talking about, are you talking about putting a fence along PRC Way of West Larson there?
It would be along West Larson and like within the property along PRC Way. Because it has to surround the buildings.
That's not going to look very good.
We, we can work with Ms. Walsh for, you know, whatever vegetative buffer can be provided there. I know there's a number of utilities along West Larson Boulevard. There's a big, you know, I know there's big water pipes and transformers and things out there, so that side might be more of a challenge to vegetate just because of the existing utilities. But we can do what we, what's possible, you know, along those roads with, with landscaping.
If I understand, y'all, y'all are basically, basically going to fence what the old call service was in use of.
Yes, with slightly different, but essentially that area.
Well, technically, they Well, technically, they can fence where that red line is. So if they fence where that red line is.
I know that. I know that.
We're going to be looking at a heavily fenced all over St. John's Avenue. And that's kind of the corridor is my concern. It's an industrial park. My concern would just be that they move the St. John's fence. Towards the warehouse. And she said that's what she was going to do, so.
She expressed to us that they're not going to fence all the way over to the eggplant people. They're going to leave a buffer in there.
Right.
And they're going to leave a buffer. So I understand all of that.
And you really want it to be fenced. You don't.
Well, no, you can't say what I won't.
Okay.
All right, you two, one at a time.
There is an existing ditch there between the eggplant and our property as well. So that's going to remain. I mean, the drainage patterns of the industrial park will remain as they are.
Any further questions or comments?
You know, it's an industrial park, but. It's not industry per se. There can be all kinds of commercial offices, complexes, things like that in there. It was not, it was not intended to look like a heavy industrial park.
And there are design standards that will lend itself. I mean, the current building is an attractive, you know, masonry building. And they'll mirror that in the architecture. And, you know, they want the site to be as attractive as possible. All of those details will be provided when we submit the site plan and the building permits.
And so the location of the fence, the landscaping, all of that will be worked out with Ms. Walsh and the city.
Yeah, this is just the rezoning stage. We'll have to get a site plan approved as well, which will be next.
Will we be able to see that when we get it?
Won't that come before us?
Not as long as the zone.
No, once past this, they're done. They move on to purchasing the property.
That's true.
Submitting for permitting. So all of their design is.
But required to meet.
Yeah. But. The state's going to require certain things that the county is not going to require, but they're going to put it in. Like security.
Okay. Any other questions or statements? Thank you very much, Ms. Walsh.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Thomas.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to remind the board that the matter before you today is the rezoning.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let's keep focused on that and whether this is in compliance with the applicable zoning and the rezoning that the applicant is requesting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I retract my hand now that you've paddled it. I'm just kidding, Ms. Thomas. Any other questions? Ms. Walsh?
Sir?
Would you care to go further or?
I don't have any other comment other than staff recommends approval of the rezoning.
Okay. All right, well, closest portion of speaking, public speaking, any conversation amongst the board?
No, I motion to go ahead and approve PB case twenty-two oh one, request for rezoning the, from planned. Industrial development to light industrial.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I will second either one.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved unanimously. Yes, ma'am. Did you have something you wanted to say?
I was just asking who's for the record this second.
She beat me to it.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. On behalf of our clients, we appreciate the time that you've spent with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, too.
Now, did we just cover zoning only just now?
I think that's all we're supposed to be covering with that one.
Okay.
With that one, there was.
Don't be smart with me. What was the motion that we approved?
To go from PID to M1.
Yeah, to move.
Are we changing the future land use and all, or is that going to be?
That's the second one.
The land use doesn't need to be changed. It's already industrial.
Yeah.
So all that needed to be changed was the zoning category. So they didn't annex anything and it was all industrial land use already and only the zoning had changed.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Okay, now we're going to move on along to PB case twenty-two dash zero seven. Annex amend the future land use map. The reason approximately zero point four four acres from Putnam County Urban Reserve. To city residential load density from Putnam County Agriculture to city residential one A zoning. Ms. Walsh?
Thank you. As you mentioned, it's point four four acre parcel on Belmont or south of Belmont Drive on Hussin Avenue. It's on the northwest, the northwest corner of Butts Parcs is currently within the city limits. The property is already, our property in the east is already in the city. To the north and south, there's one parcel between the subject parcel and the next parcel within the city limits. To the northwest, there's one parcel between this subject parcel and the next parcel within city limits. The property has been used as a single family residence. The only reason this is before you at this time is because the applicant wishes to connect to a city water and sewer. Their septic tank failed. And they need to connect. We have looked at the project analysis. For the state statutes for the annexation, it is contiguous at the northeast corner. So it's barely touching the city limits, but it's there. So we're excited about that part. So it's contiguous and it's compact. It's still kind of within an infill area. Everything around it is, is single family residences. There's no major change to any kind of zoning or land use. Doesn't further urban sprawl, so it fits that criteria. Because it's already in that built out area essentially. The development is in a suburban neighborhood, as I mentioned, with a semi-grid street pattern within two miles of the city's urban core. Further not, not furthering urban sprawl. And then zoning analysis, the proposed change is in conformity with the comp plan. Because it's already, it will be given a similar land use and zoning as to what it already exists in the county. There won't be an isolated district created. Because it's adjacent to existing residential zoning in the city. Or changed conditions make the passage of the proposed amendment necessary. Whether or not it does that, we believe it does because it helps us convert properties on well and septic systems to city water and sewer. To reduce pollutants released into groundwater and increase revenue to the city's water and sewer funds. Conditions in the area of the subject parcel are not expected to change significantly. Living conditions in the area already exist and they won't change with this approval. There won't be any significant increase in traffic. Or a detrimental effect on public safety.
So are we? Are we doing three different?
Yes, yes.
Movements?
Yes, ma'am. There will be three different motions.
Okay.
I can go through the rest of these criteria if you wish, but.
I don't think there's any need in that. Anybody on the board need that?
No.
Staff recommends approval of the annexation. That's one motion. The future land use is a second motion. Approval of the rezoning is a third motion.
So not to confuse things, but why did we get these new papers?
I'm so sorry, but the packet that I'm looking at on my screen didn't include the staff report. So I was fearing that maybe it wasn't in your printed packet, so I printed extra.
Okay, because I got a staff recommendation.
Thanks, Sunny. I was just as confused as everyone else. I appreciate that.
OCD queen, you know, this OCD queen was here. Okay.
Staff will stand for questions.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Walsh? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Anybody have any discussion, anything they'd like to say?
What order do we have to do these?
I would say we're going to, we need to do the request of the annex first.
In the order that staff recommends.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Do I hear a motion for the staff recommendation of the annex?
I'll make a motion that we. Annex the property, the point four four acre property in the city be approved.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Now we need a motion for the. Request to amend the future land use mass, map, map from Putnam County Urban Reserve to the city of Palacca Residential Low be approved.
I think a motion that we amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Reserve to city Palacca Residential Low.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Unanimous.
I'll make the motion that we rezone from Putnam County Agriculture to city of Palacca, single family residence. A, R one A.
Have a motion of a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passed with unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Walsh.
Thank you very much.
Do we already have, do you already have something for next month?
No, not at this time.
Does any board members have any comments at this time about anything today?
Glad y'all got to see me.
I've seen you too much, too much lately. Have a motion adjourned. Thank you very much.